Calling to order the December 9, 2024, meeting of the Town of Auburn Board of Selectmen. This open meeting of the Town of Auburn Select Board is being conducted both in person and remotely, consistent with Chapters 107 of the Acts of 2022, which suspends the requirement of open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed to participate remotely as long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For the public to join the meeting by telephone, dial 408-650-3123 with access code 235-235-861. Or the public can join via computer at global.gotomeeting.com/join/235-235-861. All supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by Auburn Cable Television. We, as our first item, we have executive session. We would need a motion to go into executive session.
I make a motion. Go into executive session in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30.30A, Section 21A 3, to deliberate upon matters which, if done in an open meeting, would detrimentally affect the position of the town regarding strategy with respect to litigation and strategy for collective bargaining. To come out of executive session and reconvene to an open meeting.
Second.
This is a roll call. Vote Mr. Carpenter.
Yes.
Mr. Corrine.
Yes.
Mr. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh.
Yes.
And the chair is a yes as well. This section. Open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating positions of the public body relative to strategy with respect to litigation and MCAD case and strategy for collective bargaining with municipal unions. And the board will come, the board will come out of executive session and reconvene in open session shortly. Thank you. Okay, we have completed executive session and we're resuming an open session. As a reminder, this meeting is being recorded by Auburn Cable Television. Is there anyone else in the audience recording? Seeing none, could we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have no one signed up for public comments. We have no community organizations. We do have a public hearing on a common victory license for the Hampton Inn. Is there a motion to open the hearing? So moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. I understand that the applicants are here. Did these gentlemen like to come up? Sure. You can have a seat right up here. Either one.
Right here?
Yeah, either, whatever's easier for you. Okay. Do members of the public have any questions? Do board members have any questions? Did you want to tell us what your application is for?
Yeah, it's for the sweet shop that we have in the hotel.
Board members have any questions? Is there a motion to close the hearing? So moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. Is there a motion on the application?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the license provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void, and with the conditions of the DCG to be placed on the license and that the license will be for the remainder of 2024 and for the year 2025.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. Thank you so much. Thank you for waiting.
Thank you.
We are on number eight on departmental items. There is a email in our packets to declare surplus, some IT items. Do board members have any questions?
I would just ask, what happens to the items?
Madam Chair, our IT director is on the dashboard. Mike, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Oh. So are they donated the excess, the old and non-functional equipment?
We contact a company and what they will do is they will recycle them and either reuse parts or recycle the metals, whatever they can do, or dispose of them properly.
So we don't have to pay to get rid of them, do we?
No, we do not.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Here the chair. Any data that's on here, has that been wiped in-house or does that get sent out to a third party and all these devices are cleared and scrubbed from all the data?
Yes, good question. We clear the data on all the hard drives before we send them out, and the company will also do that as well and provide us a certificate.
Thank you.
Board members have any other questions?
Just one quick one. Do they give you a certificate showing that they've, that they've done that, that they've been destroyed, or that the information has been wiped just for record-keeping purposes and all?
Yes, they do.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Is there a motion?
I will make a motion that we declare the items identified in the email from the IT director dated December 2, 2024, as surplus.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. Thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you.
We're moving along to number nine. We have no communications. We do, so on 10, we're on Select Board General Items. We need to discuss a possible second meeting in December. As of right now, I don't believe, other than a couple of license renewals that we're waiting on, there is nothing urgent. And that meeting would fall on the 23rd, is that the Monday? The 23rd. Do we want to maintain that schedule, or would we like to cancel the second meeting and do a January, just our regular January meeting?
If I may ask, those license renewals, if they're not formally approved at this point, are they still able to operate until the next meeting?
Typically, in the past, we have did a, oh, why am I blanking on it? A conditional, like as long as they got them in, in time. So like at this meeting, we would typically do a conditional renewal for them, provided they are submitted before the expiration.
And then, as far as we know, there's no other agenda items that would be needed in another December meeting?
Not so far.
And we always have the fifth anyways, and it's always, we're always subject to the chair anyway. So if something urgent bubbles up, which, make sure it doesn't. We're, we can always be called, and we don't necessarily have to meet on a Monday or anything else. I would make a motion that we do not hold the second meeting in January.
December.
I'm sorry, December. Well, I was thinking ahead. The second meeting in December unless the chair deems it necessary.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. Our next general item is the annual license renewals. There are, in our packets, there's actually an updated one as of today. There are still two alcohol license renewals that we are expecting, and then a handful of the expected renewals on the back.
I'm going to make a motion that we approve the license renewals that, subject to the list updated as of today, and that we conditionally approve any additional licenses that come in between now and December 31st that have no outstanding issues.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. We have a proposed application, as this board is aware. The A has changed their process for outdoor liquor licenses. This is the recommendation from the subcommittee. I'm going to let Mr. Chambers take it. He was the chair.
Sure. So I think we had discussions about what we would need to do. We tried to mirror it, similar to a few other towns, and cut as much red tape out of it as possible. But one of the things we'd like to do is, on the first year that they're looking for this additional thing, come before us like other members would, provide a layout or drawing and have discussions around that. But then in subsequent years, as long as, again, everything is fulfilled and there's no outstanding issues, it would be part of their automatic or their renewal process. Again, if there were issues that need to be brought before the board, we could take those up. Essentially, just looking to add this to the liquor license process, trying to make it as easy as possible for, I believe there's about 20 companies that are, places that may have it.
I thought it was 12.
12, sorry.
Yeah.
About 12 current locations. There may be more in the future. Again, we're just trying to protect the town and the board, but also make it easier for these businesses to conduct business. Any questions?
So I will say, to start, the policy that is there is the current existing policy. We didn't change that at all. We just were tasked with adding the application for it.
So, Madam Chair, if I can just ask a question. Has the town attorney or anyone just looked at the application just to make sure we have all relevant information that is needed? Or did this come from MMA in terms of guidance, in terms of what the application should look like, what the questions should, you know, be asked and information provided? Just to make sure we're covered, I understand we want to go as, as plain as possible, as, you know, as non-red tape as possible, but I just want to make sure that we do collect all the information we have to collect.
So first of all, I'd like to thank Danielle for participating and helping out the chair and Selectman Chambers. I know she relied on guidance that was provided by the ABCC. I can tell you that Town Council has not reviewed the application, but if the board would like to hold off a vote and wants the town attorney to review this, be more than happy to do that, but that's, I think the application is pretty standard, as I understand it.
But so it came from ABC, so it came from somebody, ABCC or MMA, or, okay, then I'm fine with it.
Make a motion, we adopt the application as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. We have a drain layers license. Board members have any questions? Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the license provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void, and that the license will be for the remainder of 2024 and for the year 2025.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. We have no proclamations or recognitions. We do have two gift acceptances in our packet.
Make a motion that we accept with gratitude a gift of the amount of $25 from Donna Bacon to the Fire Department Gift Account, and a gift in the amount of $250 from the Sons of the American Legion Post 279 to the Fire Department Gift Account.
Before we vote, can I just ask a question?
Of course.
So always, you know, I always had this question, but I never asked it. In terms of the Fire Department Gift Account, what is that used for and who approves those expenses out of that account? I assume it's not one that town meeting, is subject to town meeting vote, it's done by department?
If I may, there are several different accounts, special revenue accounts, that the Fire Department receives money for. This gift account typically is used for training, it's used for purposes that benefit not only the general public, but our firefighters as well. Specifically, we can give you a breakdown of that, but I, you know, I can't tell you off the top of my head specifically. Sometimes the gift is restricted for a particular purpose and can only be spent for that purpose. Others, it may be generic in nature and it's at the discretion of the fire chief. Julie did a report for us. Selectman Holstrom had asked a similar question some years ago. You might find that somewhere in the file. He had requested that information as well, so. We will get that for you. How far back would you like to go? Just? No, I'm just saying, for your purposes, you don't necessarily have to. I'm not concerned about it at all. I received the report when Selectman Holstrom requested it, I don't know how many years ago. It didn't seem of any concern to me, but if a board member is interested, obviously, I think.
It's not a, not a concern that I think something is going on. It's more of an interest in terms of understanding the accounts we have and what they're used for. Saying as though these are not, these do not go through the normal funding process of town meeting allocation that goes before Finance Committee, et cetera.
If I may, I'd be interested to see some of the examples of how this is getting used. And, you know, again, I encourage it, but if people know what it's going for, we may see an uptick in additional.
We can provide a dump of receipts and expenditures under that account, also with a narrative from the fire chief as well, so we'll get that to you.
Could I also ask, could we have a list of the gifts that have been accepted for this year? The amount, just the amounts. You know, Fire Department X amount of dollars, Police Department X amount of dollars.
I'm trying to think of the best way that we could do that. We'd have to identify the accounts and run a, we don't keep that, do we, Sharon? In a separate folder?
No, we don't keep it on a separate folder because those get sent to the treasury.
Let me work with the town accountant CFO on that.
I mean, I noticed on this, this week's agenda, the amounts, the total amount is listed. If, maybe we could just look at the agendas and see, you know, some, thank you.
Yeah.
So there's a motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. We're moving along to number 11, the Town Manager Items.
Madam Chair, so I indicated to the board that I was going to make a request to repurpose what we have for ARPA funds that we now are showing as available. So put out a request to all of those who had an earmark to get an update on the status of the account and whether or not there was any surplus funds. That being said, we've identified 168,000 and change of what has already been committed that can now be repurposed, and we are suggesting that it go into HVAC upgrades. Part of the proposal that the board considered out of the 1.4 focused on five of our facility buildings. And there is one that was not part of that, and that is currently at Fire Headquarters that needs some enhancements too. Certainly, the 1.4 was not adequate enough to meet the need, but remember, there's an estimated $900,000 of energy credits that we would be able to use for improvements as well. So we'd like to spend the ARPA money down first. If we have money left over in the energy credits, we can always spend it on some other energy efficient projects that we may have that will result in savings to the town in the long term. So there are really two transfers that need to be made. There's one highlighted for you in your packet of 168,000 coming from four accounts, and there is currently still remaining unobligated, 19,527.37. I would also request that the board consider moving that into HVAC as well.
Do board members have any questions?
I just have a couple of questions. One, since the 19,500 and change was not on the agenda, are we able to vote on that tonight?
Well, it says "and potential vote."
Okay.
I think it implies there could be a vote or...
Okay, so although it's not included in the description underneath the vote, we're able to take that vote. Okay. The other two things I have in looking at the money that you're, that you're going to transfer out or proposing to be transferred out, there's money for fire overtime. It seems like when we follow the Finance Committee discussions and the town meeting discussions, there's always a need for, because of the staffing levels, there's always a need to supplement and increase the fire overtime. The chief gave a update at the last town meeting saying that we have been underfunding that balance for some time, so I'm surprised to see that we're now giving money back that was carried towards fire overtime.
Well, remember, this is $123.00 change. I know it's not a significant amount, but you gotta remember, those were for impact shifts. Impact shifts are no longer taking place.
So those are, that was only for impact shifts?
Yes.
The other thing is new fire equipment. I mean, I understand, you know, the chief is always before supplying for grants to buy new equipment that he needs and applying, so are we sure that this money is not needed to buy the equipment for the Fire Department? So it's fire slash new equipment is the 211-29021-585702, $2,499.79. It seems to me that the Fire Department probably could use that money, seeing as though they're always saying they need new equipment and applying.
So, so there is 3,699. He indicated that they have a $1,200 commitment that they're working on now, and the remaining balance could go back to, you gotta remember, they have to have, I think it meant the commitment that they originally intended, the transfer to fund. So there's $1,200 remaining on that. So I believe the $79,000 was an estimate used at the time. There is a residual balance left.
If I may, so you sent a request to the department heads and this is what they came back with?
Yes.
So the fire chief and the sewer commission and all that.
Yes.
So they, they support returning this fund for the HVAC.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we transfer surplus funds from the following accounts as listed on our, as listed on our agenda, with a total, and we transfer that to line item 2119, 29021580H, Town Facilities HVAC Upgrades. Total amount repurposed is $168,745.54.
So if I may, was that the total, including the 19,000 that was?
No, I would ask that an additional 19,527, I would probably treat that as a separate vote.
Separate vote? Okay. So I will second that motion and...
Can I just ask a quick question under discussion before we vote? Do we already have, is this work planned? When is this going to happen? So we had an engineering study done by Siemens as part of this early on. That study led to now the preparation of bid documents, which is being done by Joe Fahey and our town engineers that would allow this to go out to bid this winter. So you're expecting it to be done in the next 12 months? That's more what I'm concerned about. I don't know how quickly this can be done, but certainly we are confident that this will be done by the deadline of December of 2026.
And may I ask, that's the deadline to show that the money's committed, not that it's actually spent?
No, spent. Has to be committed by the end of this year.
It's got to be committed by this December.
Okay.
Expended by December of '26.
Just to follow on Mr. Carpenter's question, in where, where that report said that we would be spending at least the 1.4 million plus whatever excess we just gave.
I think Joe's analysis showed that the expense approached 1.9 million. We're using some of those energy credits.
That's right. I just don't want to leave any money on the table.
To supplement the 1.4.
So there's been a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well.
So we need a motion on...
So, Madam Chair, I would suggest another motion transferring $19,527.37 from account 21129021-5709, listed as unobligated. Transferring that to account 21129021-5808, Town Facilities HVAC Upgrades, $19,527.37. Madam Chair, because this wasn't on the item on the agenda, I would recommend we carry this over to the January meeting just as an abundant...
You have to have it on.
So it has to be obligated by December 31st per the federal government? Yeah.
Well, that or an open meeting violation, that's my concern.
My, that's why I had asked that previous question. My question is that I understand the importance for the HVAC upgrades, but is there nothing else that the town could be spending this $19,527 on? Again, I will go back, this is the only, only one example of many, I'm sure. Fire overtime. Could this money be dedicated towards fire overtime, which we know is already short?
Yes, it could be. And if that is the wish of the board, then I would suggest that a meeting on the 23rd or the 30th to take that action.
May I make a note here too? It's, don't throw out the words "open meeting violation" or anything like that. I mean, right here in the agenda, it says that we have ARPA update and potential vote.
I'm just concerned that we now list how much is sitting there. If we had a total, I'd be okay with that. My concern is, because we do have, and we have to be mindful, that there are people who have already filed numerous open meeting, you know, I don't have an extra 10 grand sitting in my account to pay. So that's my concern, but if others want to go forward with it, I will abstain on the vote. I mean, I'm not looking to make things difficult, I'm just trying to make sure we're not. I think that's part of the discussion piece of this whole thing because the idea of using it for fire overtime just bubbled up tonight. I think that's part of the discussion aspect of this, of this agenda item.
Right, right. So I'm not an ARPA expert, but the overtime is not related to COVID and the funding that was released. Are you allowed to use it just for random overtime?
Because the 5 million was voted under the category of revenue loss, it would qualify as an eligible.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. And I have no objection meeting on the 23rd if, if there's an issue for that, if there's one agenda item.
May I ask, this $19,527 and change, that closes out, that commits the balance?
That commits the entire 5 million and change.
Okay.
You know, I'll defer to the majority of the board. For me, the 19,000 is not going to close the available balance on the HVAC upgrades. It's not going to make that entire project whole, but it is going to take a significant chunk out of the fire overtime that was discussed at town meeting that will provide, you know, the available revenue, so we don't have to go back to town meeting again for another infusion of the fire overtime. And it's going to ensure... And it's going to ensure that we have, you know, as close to proper staffing as possible on the fire apparatus. It just, it seems like a better, a better use of that, you know, 19,000 can make a bigger bank for the buck for the fire overtime when it comes to also looking at the impact on the taxpayers and, you know, our tax, you know, our, the, the operating budget than putting it towards a 1.9 million HVAC upgrade project.
So a good point, Mr. Crane. That being said, and understanding the concern about the old fire overtime in the current year, does the board want to consider divvying up a portion of the 168 and do a redirect to the overtime and we can bring something in that is different than what has been suggested? Now, I remember we having a discussion with the board and they put a priority on HVAC. It sounds like there may be some other interest in utilizing that money for another purpose. If that's the case, do you not, do you want to?
Can I ask, how much have we already obligated to the HVAC? And how much, if we're looking at 1.9 and have nine, the point nine in energy credits, how much have we obligated to the HVAC?
So we have 1.4 of actual ARPA monies.
Okay.
Earmarked for the HVAC with the potential of 800,000 to 900,000 of energy credit money. Now certainly, this hasn't go out to bid yet. I think Joe is going on a estimate of costs that he received based upon the Siemens engineering report. I don't know if that number is going to fluctuate, but it shows pretty good in estimating those numbers.
If, if I may, if, if they go out to bid in January and the numbers come back, can that money be reallocated elsewhere?
No.
And so it has to be in the buckets that, that it goes in and it has to stay there?
Yep. So I mean, so.
Well, so I'm just thinking because we haven't solved the overtime problem, it doesn't matter what we throw at it, but we do have HVAC projects.
Just as a note.
Outstanding, because that, the 1.9 is for what was done in the report, but there are a lot of issues with buildings that can be addressed with that money, which will then provide longer term savings in energy.
Just as a note, this 168,000 was voted, motioned, voted, approved, we're really only talking about this $20,000, less than $20,000 for fire. I just, I didn't want to like, unless we choose to.
But we can always reconsider.
Reconsider, right.
Mr. Kasnovich, am I correct that the reserve fund can be used to help pay any fire overtime that's outstanding or to make that account whole?
So if you recall, a several, several fall town meeting warrant articles addressed fire overtime.
So we've already addressed it?
So I think there's an estimate based upon discussion we had with the chief that they could be looking at a shortfall of approaching roughly 100,000? Something like that.
What was the number?
Hundred.
So 100,000 even though on, on top of what we've already addressed?
On top of what was already voted. Now I know they are hopeful or anticipate, they have at one point 12 individuals out either on, on injured on duty or outside injury that, that kept them out. And there were a few in the academy, they were hoping would count towards the minimum manning and they could build those numbers back up and kind of minimize the impact on the overtime.
And this, and similar to all the other ARPA accounts, this money, if we were to put it in overtime accounts until December 2026. So it's not necessarily just for this fiscal year, it carries us to other fiscal years to help offset as well. And if we're already talking that we've already supplemented in the fall town meeting, and now we're hearing that we could be even still 100,000 in the hole compared to what we're supplementing, I think that's a hole we need to fill. Quite frankly, more than an HVAC project, especially considering we have 1.4 million dedicated towards the HVAC, plus another eight to 900,000 in credits, that puts us at 2.3 million on something that's cost estimated at 1.9. So even if there is an increase that comes above it, you still have a $4 million wiggle room. Your cost increase, if it's more than $4 million, fire your estimator. You know, quite, you know, 400,000, fire your estimator, because that's, that's a big drastic shift. So I mean, I'm more worried about filling this overtime, making sure that we have the, the ability to man our fire stations and support our firefighters.
So is there a motion?
May I just state, I don't think our not transferring this to the fire account will mean that we won't have staffing at a fire station. Okay, so let, just be clear on that if anyone's watching. And customarily, if there are accounts that end up in the red, so to speak, at the end of the year, we close out balances from other line items into those accounts. So that number would probably decrease if, completely, if not significantly.
Yes, we typically close out those accounts, but that means that that money wasn't spent on the projects or, or, you know, projects or goods or services that we had initially budgeted for those. So I just want to, I just want to be clear. No, I understand it doesn't mean the fire station's not going to be manned, but what this does mean is that we have a growing gap in our overtime that we are not addressing, that we keep kicking the can down the road, and I'm suggesting we stop kicking.
I understand what you're saying. We're not kicking because we just did at the special town meeting, address it.
And we're now at $100,000 again.
Right. And when we talk about money left over at the end of the year, that's money that departments haven't spent. So it's not that, that we're pulling away from something and they're not getting what they want. The money is there for them to use, but it doesn't always get spent. And a lot of times that's a, some payroll too, or people, maybe we have openings or things like that. So I'm not saying can all be done $100,000, but I mean, we've been, we've been neglecting, we haven't really done much HVAC work until this project.
Right, but we have two, at this point, we have two point, before you added in 168,000, we had 2.3 million dedicated towards a 1.9 estimated contract. So $19,000 isn't going to make a big difference for an HVAC project, but it will buy us filling a gap in the overtime.
If, if I may, there was additional projects that weren't going to come in on that, and there were, we considered using that ARPA money, so we tried to have projects that would get as close to that perceived amount. The other issue or statement I want to make is the fire chief sat there and said that the overtime was being addressed and with additional hires and staffing, that that gap would be narrowing. So again, I'm not at the firehouse, I don't know, and injuries do come up, but I think that is going to remain an issue that we're addressing without having the additional head count that, that they were looking for. But again, I, I think we've talked about it, and the HVAC was the last of the ARPA money, and it kept getting kicked down because of the priorities. But I think that energy savings, and again, that's an estimate on the energy credits, we might not receive all those, but there are a lot more projects related to the HVAC that could be done using that money.
May I also add that this estimate that we have from Joe Fahey, this report, doesn't include the fire station, and you had mentioned you wanted added the fire headquarters added to that, so we would need additional money above what's in this report to cover that.
That's, that's a question that I have. If, if we have whatever we have and we don't, we have to spend 2.3 or whatever we have in that bucket on HVAC, correct?
We have to spend 1.4 plus the 168. If there's a remaining balance of the energy credits, it's not required that we spend that down 100%.
I just want to make sure that we're.
As I've been told, that does not have to go back into ARPA as an offset.
No, I'm not worried about, I'm worried about it not meeting it and then us having to find some way to spend money, which considering the fact that the police station and the senior centers seemingly have, and the library seemingly have HVAC issues with a stunning frequency, I don't think we'll have a problem, but I'm going to make a motion that we transfer 19,527.37 to the Town Facilities HVAC Upgrade Account.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The chair is a yes as well, I'm sorry.
I was a yes.
Okay. Mr. Chambers, did you?
Yes.
Okay, it is a vote. So moving along, we have no tabled items, we have no member items, we have nobody signed up for the second public comment. We do have meeting minutes in our packets. Are there any corrections or changes? Then I will accept them as read. We just need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well, we are adjourned.